Good morning once again, welcome to Harden County Commissioner's Court. It's Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, it is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order and I ask everybody to please rise to the invitation delivered by Commissioner Young, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, I want to thank you for today and all of our many blessings. Give us the strength and courage to make the right decisions for our citizens. Keep us in your will and be with us as we conduct the business of the county. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item three, consider and possibly approve the minutes of the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four special meetings presented by the county clerk, Conley Bettsen.
Seven.
Seven. Have motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four, consider approval of request by Mrs. McWilliams, the county treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and approval of today's cash statement as presented. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the courts releasing of the liability of three million eighty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. On our cash report summary and general checking, we have three hundred fifty-five thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. First Financial Bank, General Checking, Special Money Market, twenty-two million four hundred four thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars and one cent. And Texpool General, three hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. For a total in cash funds of twenty-three million one hundred seven thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and ten cents.
Motion for this. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Item number five, authorization to pay the county bills as presented by the county auditor, Mrs. Gore. Good morning.
Good morning. The pre-approval expenditures for August fourteenth is one hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred three dollars and thirty-three cents. Pre-approval expenditures for the twenty-first and twenty-second is six hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. The expenditures for Commissioner's Court today are three hundred eight thousand five hundred three dollars and fifty-nine cents. We have a list of an additional bill for our health, dental, and life insurance in the amount of three hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. For total expenses and transfers of one million four hundred sixty-six thousand ninety-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Gross payroll for August the twenty-second was six hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-nine cents, and the total transfer for that payroll was one million eighty-two thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
Motion for this. Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Thank you.
Number six, discussion and possible action to approve and accept the filings and filing in the minutes of the court, the district court order setting the salaries of the county auditors, assistant county auditors, and official court reporters of the eighty-eighth and three-fifty-sixth judicial district courts for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. We have the order here that's been signed by Judge Thomas and Judge Stover, and the salaries that are set matched the amounts that were entered in the proposed budget filed on July thirty first. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, discussion and possible action to set the salaries, expenses, and other allowances of all elected county and precinct officers. This is the public notice that was published in the C L G B by the purchasing agent, and I have the date on here, but I don't have it on here on my copy. What was the date?
August fourteenth.
August the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four, and these are the salaries, expenses, and other allowances. Other allowances this year is longevity pay, that's something we have not had in the past, but the salary and allowances are exactly what was adopted or set out in the proposed budget filed July thirty-first, as well as the longevity pay.
Summons.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I will add that the longevity pay was incorrect for two officials, Commissioner Cooper and the sheriff, and they got with H R and those were corrected before this was published, so just wanted to make a note of that. Thank y'all for bringing that to our attention. Item eight, discussion and possible action to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five Harden County budget. To ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget, the two thousand twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Harden County budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget by an amount of one million thirty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars, which is a four point three six eight percent increase from the previous year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the payroll this year is three hundred sixty-six thousand one hundred twenty dollars. So as I understand it, of the one million thirty-seven, three sixty-six, one twenty has to do with new property, and I think the majority of the rest of that amount has to do with, y'all will probably recall there was a large amount of protests filed last year, and so when we adopted our budget last year, we did not have certified values, we had certified estimates. Once those protests were settled at the end of the year, that added to the amount, that's the most of the reason for the rest of that increase. Did I have that right? All right, I may not have said it exactly smoothly as I should have, but that is the reason that that is so much higher. There was questions about that because we're adopting a no new revenue tax rate, and a lot of that has to do with the protests that were not settled by the time they adopted our budget last year. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve that action. I have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The legislature has me read that off so people can probably add us about our tax rate. Number nine, discussion and possible action to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five Harden County budget. We had a public hearing this morning at nine a.m., and I will summarize how that went. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget that I filed on July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four proposes total revenues for the Roden Bridge, General Jury, and Interest and Seeking Fund in the amount of twenty-nine million five hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars, and expenses for the same funds in the same amount. We have one change to the budget, and that was to add utilities, a utilities line item in the amount of two twenty-eight hundred dollars to the agri-life extension agents budget, and that was offset by reducing the amount of the insurance, general, law, liability, and property. Also have another page that has some changes. These are mostly title changes in the county attorney's office, which have no effect on the budget, and then there are title and a few rate changes with the Health Services Department, which were approved in Commissioner's Court at the last regular meeting. Those will also have no effect on the funds that I just read off, because these are all paid by grants. Any questions, discussion, or concerns regarding the fiscal year twenty-five budget as presented?
Summons.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to adopt the budget as presented, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? Now this requires a record vote, I'll start with Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that is a unanimous approval of the balance budget for fiscal year twenty-five as presented. Item number eleven, consider. Number ten, considering possibly approved, order to adopt the tax rate of zero point five zero two four seven three per one hundred dollar valuation for the two thousand twenty-four tax year. The debt service rate is zero point zero zero five six eight five per one hundred, and the maintenance and operations tax rate is zero point four nine six seven eight eight per one hundred. We have the proposed order here. And Angela, do you mind reading off the rates that need to be specified?
Yes, sir.
Please.
The general fund is point four zero three nine nine nine, the jury fund is point zero one seven four seven four, Roden Bridge is point zero seven five three one five, and the interest and seeking, as you mentioned, is point zero zero five six eight five.
And as discussed in the public hearing this morning, this is the no new revenue tax rate for our two thousand twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the order as presented.
Judge, can I get those numbers repeated?
Is, uh?
I can give it to you after.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's okay.
I mean, I can repeat it again if they need to, but I can give it to you after.
It will.
Thank you.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
All right, that motion was by Commissioner Kirkendall, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? Now once again, this requires a record vote, Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that is a unanimous approval to adopt the order as presented. Once again, thanks to Ms. Cook, Ms. Finn, Mr. Smith, Mrs. Gore, and Mrs. McKinney. Thank y'all all very much for all of the hard work on adopting the budget and setting the tax rate. And all elected officials and department heads have worked together to make sure that this is an easier process than it used to be several years ago. Thank y'all. Number eleven, consider possibly authorizing direct to county treasurer to provide a retention stipend to all eligible full-time and part-time employees who have completed their orientation period as of today, equivalent to each hourly employee's pay rate times eighty, or each exempt public safety's employees' bi-weekly rate, or each part-time employee's pay rate times their bi-weekly average over the past six months, or the number of months they've been employed, if less than six months. This compensation will be funded from available grant funds and or excess funds derived from accrued interest earned in line item zero one zero three six zero one hundred to be paid out on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and if approved, amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget as presented. I believe that I sent y'all a memo regarding this last week. And to outline that memo, it states that the county treasurer, who also acts as the county investment officer, has done a tremendous job in investing the county's funds, and Harden County has earned seven hundred ninety thousand one hundred eleven dollars more in interest earned over the current fiscal year than we budgeted for fiscal year twenty-four, so thank you very much, Mrs. McWilliams, for that.
I do it by myself, but.
I understand.
I under, you know, the court having a healthy reserve balance helps us to earn more interest, it stabilizes the money. Our bank contract with the bank has been really helpful, our fees are not as high with this contract. The lucrative Fed rates right now help, and then also having that special money market account, I can leave that money in there till right when we need it, get that little bit extra interest, so it took all of us to get it.
But you get the credit, because we made sure of having it.
But it takes everybody.
Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper? Commissioner Kirkendall?
This does not include elected officials.
Correct, I did mean to say that, the elected officials are not included in this, it's not lawful for us to be included in this, and so therefore, we're not, none of the elected officials are included. Any other comments? Any other discussion?
Can I just read off the totals of each fund?
Sure.
The budget amendment will be, I will not read the whole thing.
This is part of the amendment?
Yes, it will be included in the minutes, I just will tell what each fund, the total payroll would be. In our county clerk preservation fund, it will come out of their fund balance in the amount of three thousand three fifty-seven. The general fund, the total is three hundred seventy-four thousand eight forty-eight, and we're going to increase the revenue line item interest earned for that. Roden Bridge is seventy-six thousand two hundred forty-six dollars, and we're going to create a transfer from the general to offset that. Fund four twenty-two is our ARPA in the amount of two thousand three hundred forty-one dollars, and we're going to create a revenue transfer general. The PHEP is two thousand six hundred forty-six, and all the remaining ones, we're going to create a transfer from general to cover it. So the health service grants is four thousand eight eighty-two, the N E H A is three hundred sixty-eight, the EPI is eight thirty-four, and these are all health service grants. Thirty-four thousand seven oh four for vaccinations, and the health disparity is nine thousand nine hundred ninety-four, WIC is four thousand seven oh nine. The mental health is a grant that the sheriff's office has for three thousand two eighty-seven, dispatchers is nine thousand two fifty-two, crime victims, the DA's office is one thousand six fifty-three, crime victims O A G is two thousand six oh seven, crime victims O O G is three thousand two eighty-nine. And then in the general fund, we're going to have to increase our revenue and interest earned in the amount of one one hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred twelve dollars. Then we're going to create all the offsets to those other transfers to general, and we're going to transfer to Roden Bridge, ARPA, PHEP, health service grants, N E H, EPI, the vaccination, the health disparity, WIC, the mental health, the dispatchers, and the crime victims grants to offset those in the general fund.
Mrs. Gore, you might have read it, but if you did, I missed it, but the dispatchers, the nine thousand two fifty-two, that amount has to be transferred in as well.
Right.
And I did tell the sheriff the other day, I just want to say it while we're in here, that the sheriff collects money from outside entities to cover those dispatch shares, and there's no expectation for you to go for those entities for that money.
So the total of the amount that we're going to use in the interest earned is five hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred sixty dollars, the county clerk's preservation is three thousand three fifty-seven, for a total of budget transfers of five hundred thirty-five thousand seventeen dollars. Now your memo does include the S R Os with Hardin Jefferson, but they agreed to be invoiced for that amount, so it will not require a budget amendment. So the total cost of this estimated payroll will be four five hundred forty-two thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents.
Does that include the offset that we'll give back from the grants and the health services?
This is if none of the grants are available, and at this time, we don't know from the state what is available and what's not available, so we covered everything as if it was not available. But if it is available, we will not do the transfers to those grants.
Once all is said and done, could we maybe get another report that shows what was covered and what wasn't?
Absolutely, once the.
I did speak with the director of the state WIC services, Mr. Gonzalez, I believe was his name. He assured me they would cover the WIC, the four or five employees that get paid out of WIC funds. And Mrs. Whitney did reach out to her grants about getting them, and has a verbal, but we haven't submitted those budget requests, because we needed to make sure this was going to be approved before she did that, so she'll do that now.
And I would like to thank the court for doing this for our employees.
Thank you very much, I think it's definitely deserved, it's going to be a big help. There's been a lot of hardships over the past couple of years, and so this is very helpful, I believe.
Ms. McWilliams, do you have over thirty years, have you ever seen this name before?
No, sir.
And it is, it's a, I guess, this name retention stop, and I think that's a pretty good name, too. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mrs. Gore, I have a question about the previous line item.
Okay.
On item, line item number eight, did that require a record vote as well?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number twelve. Consider approval of request by Mr. J A McKinnon the third, chairman of the Historical Commission, for permission to purchase a bronze plaque from the Alamo Letter Society and place it in an appropriate location in Harden County Courthouse or on the courthouse grounds, which contains the text of the famous victory or death letter written from the Alamo by Mr. William Barrett Travis in eighteen thirty-six. Good morning, Mr. McKinnon, how are you?
Fine, good morning to y'all, and thank you for working me in on such a really busy day for the court.
I had to do it.
You've pretty well covered it in the, in the agenda item, I don't want to go at length about all this, it's the most famous letter in Texas history. It's a letter that inspired many men to join in for the battle of Texas independence, and we believe placing this on courthouse squares across the state will inspire our youth to understand what we went through to create Texas, and they will be willing to stand for the protection of our liberties and our way of life. This is a really new project, this, this has gone faster than I ever expected. This really started last year when a man that, who was visiting the Alamo, took his family and was reading this plaque that many of you have seen there, it's a huge brass plaque with the text of that famous, and his thirteen-year-old daughter said, Daddy, why, why aren't these plaques all over the state? And he said, good idea. Started an organization from that. I don't know when they got their, their very first one done, but they got everything lined up with a foundry to produce these plaques. They are solid brass, they look just, excuse me, solid bronze, look just like the ones of the Alamo. They're two foot wide, three foot long, and weigh two hundred and three pounds. They're, they're there, and they will be there forever. Here are, is the latest report, here are the counties that have already gotten a plaque. Ellis, Rockwall, Nuaces, Van Zant, Hood, Reeves, and Gillespie County. That's seven. Eight more have the plaque in their possession but have not installed yet, that's Nakadocas, Brazos, Lee, Burnett, San Augustine, Ward, Howard, and Midland. There are six more at the foundry that have been completed, that's Pecos, Hunt, Montgomery, Freestone, Collin, Novero, and there are six more in production, Kaufman, Erath, Terrell, Aransas, Limestone, and Chapelford. And there are twenty-eight more counties that are in the process of discussing and discussing approval, so this thing has gone faster than I ever expected. They only got their five oh one C three designation this past February, so it's really just in about a year that it took from start to this point. So I'm here to ask permission in behalf of the Harden County Historical Commission and of the Alamo Letter Society to obtain all these plaques and place it on our courthouse square, and so.
Summons.
We, we have, we have the funds to do it with, but of course, we wouldn't do something like this without your full compliance, and Judge, do we need to set up some kind of committee to decide on exact placement? Because, you know, I wanted to sort of use some of the old columns, we still have pieces of the old columns at Chris's yard from the nineteen oh four dome courthouse that could be incorporated into a little boundaries to it.
Are these parcels left put in some hollow? No, sorry.
Anyway, though, what would the court's pleasure be about a committee? Do we need to do something like that, because we need to guide us on exactly where and precisely how?
And I would like to, Mr. McKinnon and I talked about, and I talked with Commissioner Kirkendall briefly about it, one place that we talked about putting it is out here by the dome. I'd like to dress that area up a little better anyway, if we're going to.
Well, I think this would.
Whether we put this there or not, I'd like to dress that up, so maybe we can have a committee that works on all of this. And so if y'all want me to handle that later, I can do that, if you want to bring it back to court as an line item at the next meeting, we can appoint a committee to do that, however y'all want to do it.
I amend my motion to allow you to select a committee.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young, to approve this as you've requested, and you and I will work together and we'll appoint a committee to pick a location and also dress this area up out here where you already have some plaques.
Excuse me, Judge, I have, I have one more point to point out.
Sure.
Because they have to buy this from the foundry, they have to put this up, put the money up front.
Okay.
So if that is okay and doesn't violate any payment procedures, I will need to advance the money.
And how much is it?
Forty-five hundred.
Okay, and where is Mrs. Sims at? Any issues with doing that?
No, sir.
Okay, just get with her, and we'll get a P O entered, and then that will get the check going, and we'll get it going from there.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sounds good to me.
All right, anything else?
Not for me, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in second, any discussion? Thank you very much, Mr. McKinnon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen, consider approval of request by Fire Chief Bobby Love, Volta Thicket Fire Department, for Harden County to reimburse Volta Thicket Fire Department for professional services approved during the process of establishing Harden County Emergency Services District Number Seven. Is Chief Love here? All right, let me just say a few words about this, and then I'm going to move to table. The Commissioners Court agreed to give some money to the newly created E S D Number Seven for some expenses. As I recall, part of those expenses were to go, were going to be for them to reimburse the fire department for the legal expenses they had when they worked on creating the E S D. The number I recall at the time was the twenty-five hundred dollar, which is invoice number two there, listed on your packet. However, it looks like maybe more was billed, because there's another two thousand twenty-five dollar invoice and another five hundred and fifty dollar invoice. If those were legitimate expenses for creating the E S D, I would not have a problem with contributing a little more money to E S D Number Seven and they reimburse the fire department, I think that's the proper way to do that. However, the fire chief is not here, and I don't have an answer as to whether or not they have requested any of these reimbursements from E S D Number Seven. So I would just need more information, I think, before we take action, and if it's okay with the court, I would move to table until I have more information. Have motion by Judge Daniel to table, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? Commissioner Young, are you okay with that?
I am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, consider approval of request by, that was thirteen. Fourteen, consider approval of request by Mr. Dale Wilker, Harden County Airport, Hawthorne Field, F V O, to authorize the county judge to sign Texas Department of Transportation Airport Project Participation Agreement, two four two zero K N T Z E, for improvements to the Harden County Airport, Hawthorne Field, and consider approval to pay Texas Department of Transportation invoice in the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, as approved by Commissioners Court on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Wilker, the only change with this agreement from the last one is the increased cost that we discussed last time?
That's true.
And all the other terms and conditions are the same?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Summons.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Once again, thank you for all your work, we're ready to see it happen now.
My pleasure.
Yes, sir. Fifteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cook to enter into an agreement with Harden County Youth Soccer Club whereby H C Y S C will contribute or reimburse eighteen hundred dollars to Harden County for the use of the Harden County Veterans Memorial Park concession stand, soccer field, normal utilities, and supplies. If approved, this agreement will be in effect from October first, two thousand twenty-four through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Commissioner Cook?
Yes, sir, this is an ongoing agreement where we've had each year, it's gone way back before my time. We did increase it last year from eighteen hundred, I mean from fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred, but as I said, it's just a continuation of a formality of just getting it approved.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sixteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cook to authorize a payoff to cadence equipment finance effective immediately in the amount of forty-one thousand one ninety-two forty-seven for a two thousand twenty-one John Deere model six one one zero M tractor, serial number ending in thirty-four forty-five. Equipped with a twenty-two-foot Tiger Bengal boom mower, serial number ending in zero six eight two, and if approved, amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget as follows, moving or transferring forty-one thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars from zero one seven six two four three three four materials and supplies to zero one seven six two four six four nine equipment notes in the amount of forty thousand eight seventy-three, and zero one seven six two four six seventy equipment notes interest in the amount of three hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seventeen, consider acceptance of the annual financial statement for the year ending August first, two thousand twenty-four, for Harden County Emergency Services District Number Seven. A very fresh E S D that's just been started, and they have their financial report attached. Mrs. Gore, have you had a chance to look at this?
I have, yes, sir, everything's fine.
Thank you.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consider adoption of Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-four proclaiming September two thousand twenty-four as Food Safety Month as requested by Mrs. Regina Bolton, health inspector. Have we done this in the past, I think we have, right? Same, same resolution as we've done in the past? Anything y'all want to say about it? Have motion by Commissioner Young?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and the ladies will like a picture with us after court, please. Number nineteen, consider and possibly accept the governor's proclamation ordering the November seventh, two thousand twenty-three. I think that's supposed to say November fifth, two thousand twenty-four, right? Let's see.
What does it say in the proclamation?
It says the first Monday in November twenty twenty-four, isn't that November fifth?
Yes.
All right, so let's change that to November. All right, so let's change that to November fifth, twenty twenty four. Can't believe nothing didn't catch that. Uh, constitutional amendment, special election, it's also not that. This is our, uh, general election. So, it's proclamation, it's included in our package, signed by Greg Abbott, and, uh, filed with Secretary of State. And this is our time to accept that proclamation. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Cooper to accept the governor's proclamation as amended. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, consider approval of request by Mrs. Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to present recommendation from evaluation committee concerning proposals received for engineering services concerning the hazard mitigation grant program, HMGP DR forty seven eighty one, April, May severe storms and flooding event, and possibly award to successful firm. Good morning, Ms. Sims.
Good morning. Proposals were opened on August fifteenth, twenty twenty four in the purchasing department. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Pat Boyett were present. We received several. Went from Fitz and Shipman, Sean Bergen-Polt, Sigma Engineering, Arsena Wilson and Cole, Levens Engineering, and Cobb Finley. The evaluation committee was Erin Tupper, Clay Woodward, and Angie Smith. Uh, we talked about awarding the number one and number two.
Aye.
So, um, Levens Engineering would be number one, and Sean Bergen-Polt, number two.
So much. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Young, to accept the recommendation by the evaluation committee, and that is for Levens and in, Levens Engineering and Design to be number one, and Sean Bergen-Polt to be number two. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, and thanks to the committee for working on storing those, uh, proposals. Twenty one, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to present recommendation from evaluation committee concerning proposals received for grant administrator and project management concerning the hazard mitigation grant program, DR forty seven eighty one, April, May severe storms and flooding, and possible award to suc- possibly award to successful firm. Ms. Sims?
Proposals were opened on August fifteenth, twenty twenty four in the purchasing department. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Pat Boyett were present. We received Griffith Mosley Johnson, Lanfor Community Management, Trailer and Associates, and Grant Works. This was the same evaluation committee, Erin Tupper, Clay Woodward, and Angie Smith. Their recommendation is Trailer and Associates number one, and Lanfor Community Management number two.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Young, segmented by Commissioner Cook, to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I just realized it's not on here to, uh, award a, uh, grant administrator for one of the projects we didn't award last time. Was that the Hurricane Safe Room?
Yes, it doesn't open until, like, twenty nine.
So, it'll be on the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Twenty two, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to solicit bids for county courtroom renovations to accommodate upgrade to courtroom video and audio. I've asked Mrs. to put this on the agenda. Uh, we have paid for this in the other two district courtrooms upstairs out of general funds. Uh, Trailer and Associates advised us that we would be able to use ARPA funds to do this, so I'm asking to go out for bids and, uh, have that on our October eighth meeting to discuss whether or not to use ARPA funds for this project. So. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty three, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials and department heads or announcements which may be of interest to the public. I'm going to delve into this in a moment. I want to go back and talk about the fiscal year twenty five budget. Uh, something I meant to say when we were talking about that earlier. So, the budget increased this year, and we did talk about it during the, uh, time that we were discussing the, uh, on July the thirtieth, when we were discussing the proposed budget. The increase to the budget, the majority reason for the increases or raises to personnel. Uh, we also had an increase in health insurance of approximately five percent. Our general liability insurance increased approximately twenty percent. And then other just general increases in utilities, um, and, and just some other general increases like that. But those are mostly the reasons for the increases to the budget, and I meant to bring that up earlier and I forgot, so I wanted to talk about it here. Mrs. Gore, did I miss anything? Also the longevity pay. We implemented that longevity pay program. So, the, uh, reasons for the increases are mostly to, uh, insurance and to our personnel. Any other discussion items? Any member of the court? Anybody present? Any elected official, department head, any, have any discussion items? Ms. Cook? Ms. Cook, sorry.
Okay, I apologize for earlier, Rob.
It's okay. You got eighty-four days left. Or is it eighty-three?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to say that. Um, I just want to say, first of all, um, I've got to thank Lisa and Steve, and we also have new ta- a team member on tax rates, and that's Tiffany in, in our office. She's doing very well. I feel very confident that, um, you know, in the, for the future, that those three will have, they'll have a, they'll do a great job for you. Um, another thing I want to say is that, um, thanks to Mr. Jenna McKinnon, we have been given a, a reel which is, um, shows nineteen fifty nine, uh, eighteen fifty nine tax roll, which should be the first tax roll for Harden County. I think it's very important. We don't have any idea how we're going to look at it. He said he would help us with that, but it came from, uh, Montgomery County contacted him, and they had it in their genealogy.
Oh.
So, it would be the first tax roll for Harden County, which established in eighteen fifty eight, and this is eighteen fifty nine, so, uh, I think it's very important. I just want to pass that on. Uh, Erin said he would help us try to get something where we can look at it. I think it'd be very good if it would be accessible, so that others can look at it.
I agree.
I just wanted to bring that out to y'all, and y'all know we do have that. It's, I'm pretty excited about giving that, getting, receiving that, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, ma'am. Hey, what else? Keep moving. Nothing at all?
No, sir.
All right. You just look like you might be thinking that, so I want to make sure.
No.
All right, Greg, thank you for being here. Dev, thank you for being here, too. I want to holler at you before you leave if you have a minute. Anything else? If not, we'll move to number twenty four.
Leave it, Jerry.
That motion by Commissioner Cook, segmented by Commissioner Young, to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. We all adjourn. And I know the circuit is out. Thank y'all.